I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call the floor. The need to just say 544 in order and clear before you take all these.
Kirby Anderson.
Nelson.
Here.
Really excited to be here.
Cole. Matthew Limkey. Missy Hermes present. Steve Biggison.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So move.
In a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Agenda is approved. We have a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to Otter Elementary PTO for their donation towards a basketball hoop at McKinley School and to Darcy Cochrane for her donation of winter apparel for students. Someone offer that resolution?
Oh, offer that resolution and refer to adoption.
In a second.
I'll second.
Missy, will you take call, please?
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Kunson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Biggison.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thanks. Okay, then we'll move into our reports. And we have Kirby Anderson from the 544 Foundation Finance and Activities.
Yes. So the, uh, the foundation did meet last Thursday and, uh, we, uh, Thursday at noon and I sat in on most of that. And so we talked about, uh, we're gonna have an in-service lunch on the 29th for, uh, for our staff. Um, between 11 o'clock and 1:30, we'll be working that for the new lunch. Um, Otter Pride Night, we'll also be doing, uh, um, Talk on a Bag on September 6th. And, uh, the Legends Tournament went quite well. We, uh, raised $5,800. That'll be the last Legends Tournament that'll be hosted by the 544 Foundation. And our activities department is gonna take over that and do similar things in the future to raise funds for various activities. And, uh, they also, uh, voted to, uh, fully fund the sound system in the, in the Kennedy Secondary School for 117,000 and a partial funding of the playground. I believe it's for the incremental part to make, uh, make it, uh, accessible to all students. And so that was another 58,000. So, so we'll be getting, uh, a total of $175,000 from the, from the foundation. So that was, uh, a very productive meeting. And, uh, we have not had a finance committee meeting. Um, we did have an activities meeting a few weeks ago that, uh, Steve and, uh, Matt and Jeff and I sat in on. And, um, I think Jeff covered that real well in his, not just last week, but the one before that. So. Covered everything from fences around the football field to, uh, activities as far as, uh, different kids participating in sports. And there's a number of things. I think, uh, I think you did a nice job of recapping that. Appreciate that. I'd leave a little bit of relief for that to go to our job. So, um, that's, that's my reports. Unless there's questions.
Any questions for Kirby? Alright, thanks. And then we'll move to Melanie Cole with Regent Juan and Meet and Cooper.
I have no reports.
Alright. Uh, Missy Hermes, curriculum review and policy?
Uh, there will not be a curriculum review meeting until October. That's the first one, um, for this year, school year. But for policy, there's not. And, um, policy committee met in July. And, um, there were something like 41 policies that had to be, um, gone over and used, um, some of them, because they were so instructive and so fun to go over, we saved some for the work session today. So all of you can experience the joy of it. Um, but we see that we got on the schedule here on the agenda, 31 policies. And some of them are just as minor as, like, for example, the terminology, world's best workforce has been changed now to comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. So that's, uh, uh, just language changes. One of them I thought was interesting, you know, last year, the legislature asked that at the beginning of school each year, that students be given instruction on safe ways to get to school, walking and, and, um, riding their bikes. And, um, so this year they've added something that, um, I, I didn't know about that. No one, um, under the age of 15 is to ride an e-bike, those electric bikes. So I didn't know that students were riding them to school, but, um, so. Anyway, that's, uh, is, uh, just a bit.
What's that there? Any questions for Missy? Okay. Um, my reports are very similar. Wellness will meet in September. Buildings and grounds has not formally met. And Missy covered the policies, so.
Did you want to?
No.
Oh.
You do your great job. I think you're wearing the policy hat.
Or the crown, shall we say? I think you have the crown.
Yeah, you're the policy.
You have the car crown.
Um, Matt Limkey's actually on phone with us. Uh, he didn't have anything to report for Minnesota State High School League. And Steve Biggison.
Alright, nothing to report. The staff development hasn't met.
Okay. Well, then Superintendent Drake.
Trying to connect.
Oh, we got that new wifi.
Yeah, and we're connected.
I can hear it. I can hear it.
Alright, um, we'll go, we'll do it like this. Uh, so I'll just do it from my seat instead of the podium. Uh, so good morning. Um, lots of exciting news, uh, to report on behalf of the district. Uh, first, as, uh, Kirby mentioned earlier, a huge, huge thank you to the 544 Foundation. Uh, that's really going to, uh, make that auditorium come alive, uh, with the new sound system and the lighting board that they have, uh, very generously, um, contributed to, purchased on behalf of the school district. So we're really excited about that project. And we're also excited about the, uh, playground with the poured rubber surface on it that will make that accessible, uh, to all students, uh, out at Lincoln School. So again, our deepest appreciation for all that the foundation does on behalf of our students and staff. Uh, we are still looking to, uh, hire some positions. Uh, so just a notice to the public, uh, for people that might be interested in a number of opportunities within the district for employment, uh, to please contact, uh, Elaine in HR, uh, or go online and fill out the application. Uh, lots have been taking place at, uh, Lincoln. And so, uh, some of these photos are a little over a week old and some pretty significant changes will have taken place since then. A few photos, you'll see the before and after. Uh, but, uh, on the photo to, uh, my left, uh, you see, uh, pretty significant work, uh, going on in this classroom, setting it up with its, uh, kind of final format in anticipation with, uh, of the kids arriving. Some, still some work, but you can see that really starting to take shape. And then the photo on the right, uh, shows the, uh, big kind of cafeteria area, um, uh, makerspace area. And that is still, uh, that's probably finished at this point. Uh, there was just a little bit of work left along the firewall with some flooring, et cetera. Uh, the next photos, uh, show the, uh, driveway, uh, going out towards Pioneer Road. And then the photo to the right, uh, shows the, um, circular, uh, public drop-off area and pickup area. And then, uh, off in the distance on that photo, you see that the playground equipment had arrived and was still, uh, wrapped up. Uh, these two photos, uh, show the playground equipment, uh, being installed. Uh, so they basically, uh, drill holes and put footings in, um, and then attach the playground equipment for it. Uh, and then the poured rubber surface is the last component that will, uh, go into the project. Uh, but the equipment's from Dakota Playground. Uh, this is the same company that furnished the playground equipment for Magnuson Park, uh, that is enjoyed greatly by, um, our families in Fergus Falls. Uh, another picture on the left of one of the larger, uh, play structures for the children, uh, going in. And then on the photo to the right, uh, you can see that the, uh, oval pickup and drop-off area now has been paved. And so, uh, that is all set, uh, set to go. Uh, you can also see that paving has taken place. So the photo on the left, uh, this would be facing east along the, uh, north side of the, uh, school building. And then the photo to the right would be its connection, uh, as it swings around, uh, to Pioneer Road. And again, the asphalt's been laid. Um, this is one of the final pieces, uh, in getting that exterior ready to go. Basically, we just have left the, uh, poured surface for the playground and then some parking lot, uh, and other striping that will take place. Uh, there will be a public open house on Tuesday, August 27th. Uh, the location is the Lincoln School Media Center, uh, but the public can have an opportunity to come in and, um, uh, walk around the facility. Uh, I will give a fairly short, uh, welcome, uh, introduction to it in the media center at 6:00 and then people are free to, uh, basically do self-guided tours. And then at 6:30 that evening, uh, I will be doing a public forum, uh, on the, uh, Lincoln School. And, uh, and not, excuse me, Lincoln School, but the 3 through 5 elementary school. And encouraging the public to come and listen to that, uh, ask questions. Uh, but we'll highlight some of the differences between the proposal last May and the proposal for consideration, uh, November 5th. Uh, we'll cover some of that also in this morning's meeting. Uh, we did submit a review and comment to the Minnesota Department of Education. Uh, this, uh, ballot will have two questions on it. Uh, question number one, uh, is a question, uh, worth 48.84 million dollars. Uh, has to do with the, uh, physical structure of a new school at 96,000 square feet, uh, as well as some parking lot, playground, uh, those type of, uh, supportive structures. Question number two has to do with a middle school softball slash baseball field and soccer field. That would be an additional $910,000. Question number two can only be passed if question number one is passed by the public. Some of the major differences in the proposals from spring to fall. Uh, last spring, the, uh, total cost of the project was 54.8 million dollars. That's been reduced significantly. Uh, the cost of question number one again is 48.84. It would be still under 50 million if question number two were also approved at 49.75. Uh, the reduction, so how was this attained? Uh, part of it had to do with the reduction, the overall square footage of the facility. Uh, last spring it was 102,000 square feet. Uh, this fall's proposal is at 96,415. And then the removal of baseball soccer fields, uh, as an alternate under question number two. Uh, where did the reduction in square footage take place? Uh, you can see that in grades three, four, and five, uh, we reduced one, uh, classroom in each of those grades at 840 square feet. And there was a large group collaborative area that last spring was at 1,500 square feet. That was reduced down to 1,200 square feet. And then the final piece on the square footage was an architectural, uh, square footage multiplier that went from 1.35 to 1.26, just shrinking the, uh, total, uh, facility down a little bit more. Uh, how does, how was this impacted in terms of, um, a tax impact? So last spring, for the average homeowner of a residential, uh, property in Fergus Falls, the annual cost, uh, would have been $100. Uh, question number one has dropped that down by $14 to $86 annually. Another $4 if question number two were also passed. Uh, impact on commercial industrial, uh, companies valued at half a million dollars. 453 last spring, down to 396, uh, in the fall for question number one. Uh, you can see, um, reduction in the tax impact on Ag Homestead. Um, in this case, this is, uh, um, land I'm missing a zero there. That should be, in my apologies, that should be $5,000 an acre, not 500, uh, but a reduction from 37 cents to 32. And seasonal wrecked properties, uh, valued at half a million dollars, went from 245 last spring to 214, uh, under this fall's proposal. Uh, if approved, the, uh, project would undergo, uh, planning phase or design phase. Uh, that would involve both, uh, staff and community input. And then as the bidding phase and construction phase, uh, would follow, uh, the anticipated completion date, uh, would be, um, in the, uh, in the, uh, middle of, uh, 2026. Uh, so the likely opening would be, um, probably in the 26, 27, um, excuse me, 27, 28 school year. So if that's, um, that's what I have for my report this morning. Any questions?
Any questions for Superintendent Drake? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so then we'll move into our general consent items. We have the minute from our July 15th, 2024 board meeting. And, um, Kirby, I'll move to you. Building treasures.
Okay, yeah. Missy and I came in early this morning and that was Renee. And so on the treasures report, um, we reviewed that and our, our fund balance is sitting just over 20 million right now. So, um, it's in pretty good shape at this point in time. Couple of, uh, couple of highlights there. Um, community ed is continuing to be strong. Uh, dropped a little bit from 391, 391,000 last month to 371,000 this month. Um, food service also dropped a little bit and, yeah, they're right around 900,000 right now, but we have been able to, uh, because of some changes that were made, we have been able to buy some, uh, tables and chairs and things like that out of, for cafeterias, out of the food service fund, which was not allowed in the past. So that's been a, a, a good thing. Went through, uh, about 40 pages of bills today. Um, there was, uh, no construction, um, bills today. We are scheduled to have a draw meeting this week, so we'll see some, uh, a number of construction bills on Lincoln, um, at our next meeting. Um, some of the, uh, some of the highlights of our, uh, bill review. Um, we went to a site called localauctions.com. I think Superintendent Drake phoned that for us. And we were able to buy some office chairs and some tables and some file cabinets, um, for a very small percentage of what they would have been new. And I think that was out of Fargo, I believe. And we were able to drive up there and, uh, take advantage of, of that to save the district some money. Um, a lot of, uh, a lot of curriculum this time of year. Um, also, uh, got some, uh, some repairs over at, uh, Roosevelt. Smart boards, $10,000 out at, uh, out at Lincoln. Um, we're seeing a few moving expenses. I think the total moving expenses so far has been right around $10,000. Again, lots of curriculum, go for sports, things like that. Um, we paid $12,000 for the, uh, for the engineering on the, uh, parking lot at the ALC and the Armory, which I think is on our agenda for today. So hopefully we can get that done soon. Um, one of our quarterly report, our payments to Lakeland went out. Um, unemployment, $37,000 that we paid in unemployment. And that, that was for a three-month period, but most of that would have been in June. So we can anticipate another couple of payments like that for July and August of $37,000. And we are being reimbursed for that so far until the state runs out of money, unless that's, that fund is added to. So. Um, Solid Technology, 5,800 for some of the, uh, sound system at the Lincoln Gym. We're doing a lot of updates to sound systems in most of the gyms in our, in our buildings. Um, $25,000 to TechCheck and that's for new servers and switches at Lincoln to provide for internet and phone. And I believe that is about it for the highlights. So, um, oh, a partial payment on the Lincoln, uh, playground, to Dakota Playground for 38,000. So, uh, total of bills was just over a million dollars, 1.1 million. And, uh, so that's, like I said, no construction this month. We'll see that, uh, or this week. We'll see that in two weeks. Thanks to Renee for having everything in order as usual. Thanks for Missy for coming in early on a Monday morning. That's it. Unless there's questions.
Any questions for Kirby? Awesome. Thanks. Okay, then we'll move on. Elaine.
Good morning. Yeah, good morning, everyone. It's that time of year that I have, I get a whole page to myself. So, um, kind of hold on, you had, I will not go through all the different little details that's all listed in front of you. Um, the certified staff hires, um, it's late in the year, so we are very blessed to have been able to fill so many, um, certified teaching positions. Um, Emily Bellamy, um, speech and language pathologist. Nick, uh, Nicholas Denault, music band teacher. Nicholas Larson, choir teacher. Ryan Behrens, special education teacher. Sabrina Etienne, uh, elementary social studies teacher. Um, Caleb Anderson, business ed teacher. Monica Peterson, math teacher. And hence, she was already hired a .10 previously. Uh, we're now hiring her additional .1667, one class, one year for IQ Academy. And then, uh, Terry Page, uh, science, um, teacher, long-term substitute, um, here at Kennedy Secondary School. Resignations, Alex Howe. He was previous, um, long-term substitute in that area of science where Terry is taking his place. Um, Dallas McBride, math teacher. Uh, support staff resignations, Lisa Selberson, Ashley Holmquist, both special ed paraprofessionals. Sarah Johnson, nunar supervisor. Ethan Anderson, head custodian. Kylene Johnson, nunar supervisor. And Amanda Bronfeld, non-public school registered nurse. Um, just reminding everyone that we, um, do provide, um, nursing services to our non-public schools, Hillcrest and OLB, um, through the non-public pupil aid that we receive. And we're kind of act as a fiscal host for that. Support staff retirements, we have Jill Thorsten, special ed paraprofessional. She's been working with us for 25 years. Um, so we have a resolution a little bit later for her. Support staff hires, um, Connie Cooper, third-party billing, special ed secretary. Cassidy Robnus, head secretary at ALC. Margaret Ness Ludwig, para educator at ALC. Kylene Johnson, para educator at McKinley. Kaylee Yideras, para educator at Adams. Katie, Kaylee, excuse me, was a Title I para last year and her position was cut. And she's gonna be coming back as a para educator for us. Eliana Davis, special ed para, RSTAR, special ed para. Kyla Bertram, Maya Schulten, Abby Schultz, Natalie Swenson. Again, all special ed paraprofessionals. We still have about three, um, at least three special ed paras to fill. So again, if anyone knows of anyone that's interested in, um, work, we have a spot for them. Um, head coach resignation, Titus Christensen. Um, he was head boys tennis coach. And then we have, uh, two contracts, the Para Educator Association for the 24-26, along with, uh, custodian secretary, um, contract. So I would recommend all these for school board approval.
Alright. Need a motion to approve our general consent items?
So move.
Uh, do we need to mention the other last two items?
Yep, you needed.
Oh, sorry. I'm much interested. You're good.
We've got one motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on those? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. These items are approved. We don't have any old business, but we do have new business. Um, so our first item is setting the school year 25 Fergus Falls Public Schools meal rates. The student regular breakfast will still remain free. Adult breakfast will go to $2.65. Student regular lunch, K through 12, remains free. An adult lunch is $5. That's set by MDE. A la carte entrees, $3. Um, milk only is 45 cents. It was 40 cents. And then if a student wishes to purchase a second meal, we charge at the adult meal rate. Can I get a motion to approve those changes?
I'll make that motion.
And then a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I have a question. Why is there a charge for milk? Why, if you're not getting a meal, you're just getting, why is there, you, why can't you get your milk free?
Because in order for us to be reimbursed, um, they have to have all the meal components. And so if they only take milk, let's say if they bring their lunch from home and then they want a milk, we don't get reimbursed for the milk.
Is that a federal?
State or federal? I don't remember which one. It, it comes from MDE guidelines, though. Yeah, they have to have all the compute, uh, specific components of a meal in order for it to be reimbursed.
Interesting.
Yeah. Doesn't make sense to me. Good.
Alright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That meal rates have been approved. The next item is the acceptance of quote from Solid Technology Systems for a new auditorium sound system in the amount of 105,948 dollars. Need a motion?
So move.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that one? Thanks to the foundation for helping with that big purchase. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That quote is approved. Then the acceptance of bid from Ferguson Brothers for the ALC and Armory parking lots. Mill and overlay project in the amount of 178,541.50. Need a motion to accept that bid?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion on that one?
Any idea when that's gonna be done, once we award the bid? Probably not before school, then.
Uh, it won't be done before school, but I believe it will be done by, uh, mid to late October.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. Then we have child and adult care program renewal of contract for vended meals 2024 between ISC 544 and Children's Corner effective September 3rd, 2024 through June 3rd, 2025. Can I get a motion to renew that contract?
So move.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that one?
Is the rate for, um, the meals similar to the prices we've set in, uh, item number one?
414, I think is what it is. It was 419 last year.
Right.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. That contract is approved. Then we have the 2024-25 Fergus Falls Public Schools K-12 student handbook. I motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the handbook? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. Um, we have an addition of one FT para educator position in the high school effective August 29th, 2024. Need a motion to approve that?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that one?
I might just add that this was a position that was our hall supervisor previously. At about five hours, so it was just changed into, we needed a little extra time. And so we changed into a para educator position. Uh, we no longer have the hall supervisor position. Okay, so just a little background.
Those duty, the duties of, of monitoring are, are gone then, or is it? They're still incorporated in it. Okay. Probably not as much versus having just someone sit right at the door. Uh, but they will be, um, according to the job description, still monitoring the halls.
Very good. Yeah. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That position is approved. Then we have an additional, um, one FT night custodian position for Lincoln School effective 2024-25 school year. Need a motion to approve that position? And a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. That custodian position is approved. Then we have our 2024-25 school district goals. Can I get a motion to approve the goals?
So move.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Those district goals are approved. We have a memorandum of understanding between the Fergus Falls Public School District and Otter Tail County Family Services Collaborative effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Need a motion to approve that memorandum? Need a motion to approve that memorandum?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, that one is approved. Then, as Missy alluded to, we did some revisions to our current school board policies. Not going to list them all, but they're all in the agenda. If anybody wants to take a peek, can I get a motion to approve those revisions?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. New revisions, policies are approved. Then we have our first reading of the new school board policy, policy five twelve, school-sponsored media and activities. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That first reading is approved.
It says roll board action. Where's that?
All right.
It's just the first reading, so.
There you go.
It's my, it's my first reading. It's good.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing. And I'm typing away, I'm not even, I'm trying to keep up with the, I'm one, one motion.
It's going right along.
Okay, we have a resolution on the retirement of Jill Thorsted. Whereas Jill Thorsted began her employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in July two thousand. And whereas Jill has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past twenty-five years. And whereas Jill has been a dedicated special education paraprofessional for the district and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Jill Thorsted for her twenty-five years of service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Someone offer that resolution, move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Missy, will you take role, please?
Yes. Steven Vigasoff?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Kinowitz?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Missy Hermes? Yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Then we have the resolution relating to the issuance of school building bonds and calling an election thereon. I'm going to read just a couple of main points, but there is more information in here. So be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District five forty-four, state of Minnesota, as follows. Number one, the School Board hereby finds and determines that it is necessary and expedient for the school district to borrow money in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty-eight million eight hundred and forty thousand dollars and not to exceed any limitation upon the incurring of indebtedness, which shall be applicable on the date or dates of the issuance of any bonds, for the purpose of providing funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the construction and equipping of a new grades three through five elementary school facility. The question on the borrowing of funds for these purposes shall be school district, question one, on the school district ballot at the special election held to approve said authorization. Number two, the School Board hereby finds and determines that it is also necessary and expedient for the school district to borrow money in an aggregate amount not to exceed nine hundred and ten thousand dollars and not to exceed any limitation upon the incurring of indebtedness, which shall be applicable on the date or dates of the issuance of any bonds, for the purpose of providing funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the construction and equipping of soccer and baseball fields at the new grades three, new grades three through five elementary school facility. The question on the borrowing of funds for these purposes shall be school district, question two, on the school district ballot at the special election held to authorize said borrowing. The passage of said school district, question two, shall be contingent upon the approval of school district, question one, as described above and herein. Then we'll jump to number six. The ballot questions specified above shall be submitted to the qualified voters of the school district at the special election, which is hereby called and directed to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four. This date is a uniform election date specified in Minnesota State, Minnesota Statute, section two oh five, eight point zero five. And then number seven, pursuant to the Minnesota Statute, section two oh five, eight point one one, the precincts and polling places for the special election are those polling places in precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district and which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part with the school district. The voting hours at those polling places shall be the same as those for the state general election. And then I'll just reiterate what Superintendent Drake said in his report on the special election ballot. There will be two questions. The first one is approving the bond for forty-eight million eight hundred and forty thousand for the facilities. And then question two, which would only be able to be approved if question one passes, is the additional nine hundred and ten thousand to provide funds for soccer baseball fields. If anyone wants to read anything more about that, that is all within our board packet. Someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution, move for its adoption.
And a second?
I'll second.
And Missy, will you take call, please?
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Kinowitz?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Missy Hermes? Yes. Steven Vigasoff?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Perfect. Our next meeting schedule then is Monday, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, at seven fifteen a.m., our last morning meeting of the summer. Can I get a motion to adjourn today?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. All right.